Call this meeting to order of the Ellisville Town Council Monday Agenda for -- Agenda, October 14th. Jimmy, you want to lead us in prayer?
All right, we follow this one more time. We come before you this evening. We thank you so much for this little town we serve. We thank you for so many people that are here. We're actually leaving, guys, with pleasing. We asked you to allow us to speak in terms that would be able to understand and be good for one another. I say Jesus name. Amen.
Amen. Kevin, you want to lead us in prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Dan Swafford?
Here. All right, first thing on the agenda is approval for minutes for the regular meeting September 23rd, 2024.
The move?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? A cap? Excuse me. Action? Hang on a second. About swallowed a piece of candy. Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll vouchers. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept accounts payable vouchers and payroll vouchers.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, next on the agenda, open quotes for construction of the Heritage Trail restrooms.
We have several bids this evening, and I've been advised that -- close, sorry. I've been advised that some of the contractors bid on all portions of the project and some just bid on a portion of the project, so it may seem a little confusing. Afterwards, I will ask the council to take the matter under advisement, so all of the bids can be reviewed. So the first one is from -- I'm sorry, thank you. All Seasons HVAC and Plumbing, Inc. This is for bid package six only. The quote is $20,300. Quote number two is for bid package seven. Again, All Seasons HVAC and Plumbing, Inc. This is for package seven. $8,980. The third one is from Bell Heating and Cooling, L.L.C. The next one is from Fox Construction Company. Bid packages one through seven. The next one is from HFI. This is for package six and seven. The total for six is $8,600. The total for seven for the HVAC is $11,800. Again, for plumbing, package six, $8,600. Seven is for the HVAC only, $11,800. Next one's from Keller Heating -- Keller, sorry, Keller Heating and Air Conditioning, Inc. The next one is bid package four, Midwest Specialties, L.L.C. This is for the partitions and restroom equipment, $6,855. Next one is again for Midwest Specialties. This is for bid package four, partitions and restroom equipment, $5,175. Next quote, Strauser Construction Company, Inc. This is for bid packages one through seven. The next quote is from Tim Dumas, Unrivaled Electric, L.L.C. This is for package five, the electric, $8,563.82. The next one is from Value Built. This is for bid packages one and two. Bid package one is $28,500. Bid package two is $31,000. Next one is from Walker Plumbing, L.L.C. This is for bid package six, plumbing, $8,000. The final one is from Woods Electrical Contractors. And this is for bid package five, the electric, $12,555.
Is that all of them?
Yes, that's the end.
Okay. I'm assuming you guys are taking this under advisement and will get with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Was there any of them that was for all the bids?
Yes, there were at least two that were for one through seven.
Thank you, darling. All right, resolution. Resolution 35-2024, additional appropriations, $10,000 general fire fuel.
That would be me. We've had a between 25 and 30 percent increase in run volume this year, just due to all the people we have. And with the diesel fuel that's gone up so much, we need a little more money to get us through the end of the year.
Will $10,000 be enough to get you through the end of the year, you think?
That's -- I've got maybe a thousand buffer in there or so.
Okay. So we may be seeing for you again, but this is not like a controllable where you can -- somebody's on fire. We don't have the money for gas. We'll just --
Yeah, just depends how many times the alarm goes off.
Yep. All right.
All right, any other council comments, questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 35-2024 for additional appropriations for $10,000 for the general fire fuel.
I'll second.
Motion seconded. Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call?
There's --
Oh, sorry. If you'll come up here, state your name. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Maybe they'll raise their hands. People on Zoom, but none has raised their hand.
My name is Jim Curry. I'm just wondering what metrics we use for the efficiency of our use of fuel. You, Councilman Ellis or Councilor Ellis mentioned the necessity of it, but the other question is how efficient or what metrics do we have that indicate we're using our fuel efficiently? I'm not -- Cost per call?
Oh, I see.
Gallons per call? Gallons per mile? Gallons per day? What's -- what are our metrics?
I think that would be pretty hard to answer because of the different calls, unless, Kevin, you've got any insight on that, but --
We don't check miles per gallon on a fire truck.
Okay.
I mean, it totally depends on where the call's located, which vehicle responds, how many vehicles respond. There's no way to --
Right. But you guys don't take those to the drive-in or anything like that, do you?
No.
Okay.
We could certainly, though, I suspect there are fire departments with metrics of that sort that we could use to guide our use of the fuel.
Yeah, I'm sure we could look into something like that, but it's a lot of paperwork and I'm not sure it's really needed, but it's something definitely we can take into advisement, for sure.
Yeah, I suspect it wouldn't take great amount of paperwork, but --
No.
It would be useful when we're sort of having these conversations to ground them in some evidence about the metrics we use to assess performance.
Are you asking for like, just, I'm just spitballing this, like, X amount of gallons per run on average? I know it's going to vary for where, but, I mean, Kevin, how do fire departments estimate that?
I have no idea. I've never heard of that being done on a fire truck.
I didn't know if that was --
Or, I mean, any emergency service vehicle.
Yeah. And then, I'm not really sure what it would do because your next year runs would be totally different, so, I mean, I think, I understand what you're asking is how much we're spending compared to how many miles we're driving, but I just don't think that that's relevant in any way that we could, you know, adjust anything with.
Yeah, miles are irrelevant for the simple fact that we might drive a mile down the road and the truck sits there for six hours at a fire.
Right.
So it's irrelevant.
And the pumps would be running constantly and --
Exactly.
So.
Now, Mike, you can probably chime in on this. Some municipalities have invested into their own fuel tanks, correct? And when they buy fuel when it's less expensive?
That's true. It's something we're going to look at in the future, but for certain kind of vehicles --
Especially emergency vehicles. We're interested in performance and durability mileage. A gas mileage is the last thing we think about, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily referring to gas mileage. I'm referring to the sort of the efficiency of the utilization.
Well, that would come under performance. That would come under performance.
Yeah, which could be a more complicated metric.
Probably.
We try to not --
I'll do a little checking to see if I can get you some ideas.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Roll call, please.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, ordinances under first reading. Ordinance 2024-21, ordinance, amending ordinance 2024-18, effective date, January 1st, 2025. Who is this?
I can speak about it. Darla graciously, thankfully, did this ordinance because at the last meeting, I did not clarify when this would take effect because I didn't have it in the previous ordinance. So this is just for clarification purposes for the personnel policy to take effect of January 1st, 2025.
Gotcha. Any council comment? Questions?
No.
Any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to ordinance 2024-23, bond ordinance approving the insurance bond of the town municipal sewage works. Who's got this?
Well, I guess --
Would you like to get covered up?
Yes.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
I was going to --
Thank you for being here, Mitchell.
Thanks, Mitchell. I was going to take it. So ordinance 2024-23 is an ordinance on first reading. What this ordinance does, it allows the town to allow it to issue sewer source debt to finance the proposed remaining portion of the maintenance facility. The bond ordinance here authorizes bonds up to $5,555,000 and a max interest rate of 6 percent. Now, when you're looking at that ordinance, when we go issue the debt, right now, we're looking to issue somewhere in the range of $3,650,000, and the interest rate is currently around 4 percent. The terms that we've included in the ordinance, we've added additional flexibility just to account for any fluctuations. And if there were to be anything unforeseen that were to happen, we want to make sure this ordinance is in place and you wouldn't be slowed up in the process, going through the first and second reading process again. Now, even though the ordinance allows you to issue up to that amount, you do not have to go issue the full amount. Like we said, right now, the plan, talking with management for the sewage works, is to seek financing to the Indiana Bond Bank at that par amount of $3,650,000. The ordinance authorizes both your clerk treasurer and your council president to sign the legal documents that will be required to close with the Indiana Bond Bank. It also raises out various requirements for your sewage works to maintain its rates and funds and debt service in specified accounts so that when payment comes due on the bonds, you have the money set aside and are able to make full payment on debt. Any other, any questions on the bond ordinance? Today, you will just have the first reading by Tyler Rooney of that ordinance, and then at your subsequent meeting, we look to your second reading and an option.
Thank you. Any council comment?
One thing I missed, though, the max project cost was $5,555,000. The max par amount for the bond would be $4 million, as authorized by the ordinance.
So the bond's $4 million?
Yes, $4 million would be the max. The max for the project for the maintenance facility was the $5,555,000. Because if you recall, you did issue a general obligation bond at the end of last year that covers the remaining portion for that project.
Good. I will say this is a lot to read, and we did get this kind of late because I didn't see it till this morning, so I will probably reserve the right for questions next meeting. Any other council questions? Seeing none? Any public comment? Yes, sir. Can you --
Excuse me, I just --
Can you come up here to the mic and write your name, please, and tell us? Sorry. That way, we got it recorded.
That's fine. I just didn't quite hear what was specifically what was said. Now, was that, my name's Marlo Smethurst, S.M.E.T.H.U.R.S.T. Just wanted to make sure that was for a bond ordinance for a sewer maintenance facility? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, we shall move on. Ordinance 2024-24, rate ordinance for proposed increase in sewer rates and charges.
And I will discuss that one as well. So ordinance 2024-24 is the ordinance to increase sewer rates for both the town of Ellisville customers as well as Eastern Richland. The rates for the town customers will be increased over two phases. Phase one, the ordinance will be effective upon adoption, and then phase two will be effective January 1st, 2026. And at the last meeting, I had presented on the rates that are on the rate increase in the heat port for the sewage works. This is not only to support the debt service on the proposed maintenance facility financing, but it's also to support the increase in your expenses for the sewage works. We had brought up at the last meeting, the last time your rates on the sewer side were adjusted were in 2016. At that time, the Ellisville customers had received a rate decrease in 2016, so really the last time you've seen a rate increase for your customers was back in 2010. So once these rates are in place, this will support the bonds that we talked about in the bond ordinance, as well as increases in your operational expenses for the sewage works.
And for the record, again, what was the rate increase again, the two phases?
The dates of the --
Well, the amount.
The increase for phase one, just looking at an average customer and what we typically say is fourth dollar now, sort of average sewer user uses on most systems. For phase one, their increase in just their sewer bill will be $9.75, and then under phase two, it'll be an additional $9.75, and that would be in January 1st, 2026.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Yes. Okay. Where is one of you? Why is the Eastern Richland cheaper than the Ellisville customers? Like, there's a difference, one's $570 and then the Eastern's $485.
Because Eastern only pays on what goes on at the wastewater treatment plant and what the town people paid for, is all the employees and vehicles and stuff, and the growth we've had here in town. So Eastern only pays on the rate, so when they're doing the rates for Eastern Richland, they're basing those only on what the cost is of increase out at the wastewater treatment plant only, and not the rest of the sewer.
But to be clear, their rates also include their maintenance of their collection system, take care of those stations, manpower, that -- So when they form their rates, they take what they pay for treatment, add what they take care, or pay for their collection system, and so that's how their rates are figured. So --
They have their own operation and maintenance costs.
Right.
So that's why you said --
Any other comments? Questions?
Thank you, Mitchell, Dex.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Ordinance on second reading. Ordinance 2024-22, amend the zone maps.
I would ask that the council table this to its next meeting.
Is there a motion for tabling?
I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2024-22 to amend the zone maps.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion tabled.
All right.
Dan, just a question. We may have some of the public that wanted to speak on this. Do you want to invite them to --
If we tabled it, they can't really speak without, until the next meeting, because we've already tabled it.
But they can talk. Privilege of the floor, though, correct?
I think so. Is that correct? No? Yes?
No, I mean, if they want to speak, the privilege of the floor, that's fine.
Okay.
At the end, anybody wanting to -- we'll have to know, so.
Yeah, if you told me before we made the table, I could have --
I thought you were going to ask for public comment before I tabled it.
Sorry. All right. Old business, redevelopment commission.
I had asked this to be placed on the agenda because initially, we had thought that the first meeting of the redevelopment commission would be this evening, but with fall break with the kids, we didn't have a quorum, so the next meeting or the first organizational meeting will be October 28th. So if you want to table this matter to the next meeting, that's fine, but essentially, what I had on the agenda was my contract for employment to represent the redevelopment commission and then also to discuss the bond and the per diems from the board members, because I didn't know how council wanted to handle that. By statute, all of the members are supposed to bond, and as I understand it, that's paid for by the town. So I have put in a phone call to the town's insurance company, Mr. Babs, to ask about that and to find out what the cost is per diems. If the council wants to discuss that or if you want to table that to the next meeting, that's fine, but the RDC is going to have no money for a while, so.
Well, the question of the per diems, the town council members have to forebode those, correct?
Yes. By resolution, that will be one of the first, or the first order of business for the RDC is for the town council to pass a resolution stating that the council does not get paid.
Got you.
The council members do not get paid.
But the other, so whatever the per diem we can set, then we carve that out of the first RDC meeting that we don't get paid?
Yes.
Okay.
How does the council want to approach this?
So I definitely think it'd be okay to go ahead and vote for Darla to be on the
For her legal fees?
Yeah, I think we'd go ahead and do that. She's got that already set for us, so we can see that.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Okay, I make a motion to accept the agreement with Darla Brown, Law for Legal Services to the RDC.
Is there a sec? Motion seconded. Any council comments? Darla, would you like to make any comment?
I do not. Thank you for considering me.
Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so do we need to table the second half of this, or?
Why don't you until the board meets and has its organization meeting?
Okay.
And I'll have an answer hopefully by the next meeting as to what that, the posting of the bond was going to cost the town.
Gotcha. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to table bonds and per diems for board members for the RDC.
Second.
Motion seconded. Roll call?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion tabled.
That, excuse me, Dan, that meeting will be at 5:00.
5:00?
Yeah, on the 28th, prior to the regularly scheduled town board meeting.
So has the RDC been set, then? All the board members?
Yes.
We do have the board members, yes.
Okay. All right, new business, supplemental fire service agreement for 2025 Richland Township.
This is renewing the contract between the town of Ellisville and Richland Township to provide fire and EMS protection to the citizens of Richland Township.
What was the budgeted increase for his? Any council comment? Questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the supplemental fire service agreement for 2025 with Richland Township.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Duke Energy Easement, who has that?
I'll take it. I asked this to be placed on the agenda just so the council could be aware, excuse me, that Duke Energy has asked for a couple of easements so that they can complete or do the work for the utility building, and I have been provided with the easements. The Ellisville Building Corporation needs to sign those, and so I am hoping I can get a meeting with the Ellisville Building Corporation Board before the week is out so that they can sign those easements and we can get them back to Duke. So there's nothing for you to do. I just wanted to make you aware of that was going on.
Thank you. Any questions for Darla? Seeing none, we will move on. Member random of agreement between Chris Smith and the town of Ellisville.
This is --
Go ahead.
This is a continuation of some petitions that have been before the town council. You're all aware that Chris Smith is building a subdivision out at Harmon Farms, and back in May, there was a discussion before this board about possibly obtaining a strip of land from the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation that will connect South Ridge Springs Lane to Harmon Farms. And so that was done back in May, and this is a continuation of that project, if you will, because when the road is built to connect Harmon Farms to Ridge Springs Lane, the plan is now is that it's going to cut across this upper northeast corner of Wells Park. So the proposal is that the town will give Chris Smith 0.16 acres, and in exchange, he will give the town 0.27 acres. You should have as part of your packet Exhibit A, which is a diagram that was prepared by Bynum Fanyo.
It's going to be the separate off to the right. It's not in the big packet, and it's probably, yes, so there's that map for you.
And also, as part of that land swap, Mr. Smith is going to give the town an easement or right of way of 0.08 acres, and then the town will also have, the town will also give Mr. Smith an easement of 0.33 acres so that he can finish the road. So what you're looking at on Exhibit A is part of that road, but it dovetails into that 60-foot parcel that the school donated to the town back in May, if that makes any sense. But it dovetails into that sixty-foot parcel that the school donated to the town back in May, if that makes any sense. This is all one part of that road project to connect the subdivision to South Ridge Springs Lane.
Can I ask a question while we're talking about this? Would this be something that the clerk has to record after it's completed?
I, no, um, eventually what will happen is Smith is going to provide the legal descriptions and I'll prepare the documents and those will be recorded.
Okay.
All right, any council comments, questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for, um, to approve the memorandum of agreement between Chris Smith and the town of Ellisville for exchange of real estate.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any public comment? Seeing none, roll call please.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, new hire for the planning and utility department position.
I'll take this, uh, we, we ask the, um, request be tabled till the next meeting.
Okay, is there a table, motion?
I'll make a motion to table the new hire for planning and utilities department position till the next meeting.
Second.
Motion seconded, roll call please.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion tabled.
Centennial Park LLC termination of bond and letter of credits.
I would ask that this be tabled.
Right along here. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to table Centennial Park LLC termination of bonds and letters of credit.
I will second.
Motion seconded, roll call.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion tabled.
All right, sidewalks in Overbrook Estates.
That's me.
Okay.
Um, I'm at a little bit of an impasse and need the council's help. I have one parcel left in Overbrook Estates that needs a sidewalk on the side of, uh, nine seven-two East Nicolet- Nicholas. And, um, the developer, I guess, put in the covenants and restrictions, the homeowners to put the sidewalk in, but of course, you know our agreements with the developer. So I've gotten sidewalks on three out of four, and this is my four, so I'm just requesting the council give a deadline of the next council meeting to get the sidewalk in, and I think it will happen.
Um, so you've talked to the contractor, he's in agreeance to doing this, correct?
The developer.
Developer?
Yeah, cause she asked how much time she would have, so I think it'll get done if you give a deadline.
Okay, and what kind of deadline are you looking for?
Next council meeting, the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Please.
Is this the, I think we discussed it about six months ago, is this the same one?
Correct, Mr. Perry complained about, yeah.
Year ago.
A year ago, okay.
A year, more than a year ago.
For the record, Mr. Perry stated more than a year ago. Okay. But, all right, so what, so the motion would need to be to set a deadline?
To have the sidewalk installed at nine seven-two East Nicholas Lane by October twenty-eighth.
I will make a motion to set a deadline to have the sidewalk installed by October twenty-eighth at the set address.
Second.
Motion seconded, is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, roll call.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, privilege of the floor on any non-agenda items. If you will walk up, write your name, state your name.
There is a three-minute timeout limit on this, so.
I'll, more, three minutes more or less, I-
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not here to make a long speech tonight. Um, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Scott Reynolds, and, uh, I've taken some real interest in, um, the matter that was, uh, the first matter of the evening that was tabled, uh, this evening, the zoning issue. Um, first, I want to say thank you for, uh, tabling that, uh, for the reasons I laid out in the letter that I believe you all received, um, I think it would have been, uh, premature to pass that this evening. Um, but that's the procedural side, and I, and I think that there's also the substance of the project, and I, I just want to explain a little bit of my concern and why I got a little passionate about this. And I'm here on my own behalf, uh, but also with a group of like-minded, uh, people who have similar concerns. Um, so I got my start as an attorney about twenty years ago, and I represented, uh, real estate developers, pretty significant-sized real estate developers out on the West Coast. And, uh, we knew when there was a project that was controversial, we had a playbook that we needed to follow. And so that was, you know, your client, your developer finds the land that they want, uh, they form a new LLC to hide the identities of the partners, they find somebody who's local for the handful of unavoidable public appearances, uh, they keep it as quiet as possible, and then we move as quickly as we can. And, uh, we warn the local officials who might know about this that if, uh, they don't move fast with us, that the deal will die. As a way of putting pressure on. So when I read about the plan commission meeting that recommended the rezone that was just about ten days ago, uh, I felt a real strong sense of deja vu. And I stopped doing that work because I couldn't deal with some of the consequences that I saw with communities. When I learned more about this particular thing, to the extent that there's information out there, I felt extremely concerned, uh, because as far as there is any details about the description of this project, it sounds very much like a server farm or a data center, and those are not good neighbors. Uh, just last month, uh, an essay appeared, uh, called "Noisy, Hungry Data Centers Are Catching Communities By Surprise", and it was in the New York Times. And, uh, it talks about the fact that the AI boom that requires all of these data centers has become a nightmare for, uh, the people who live close to one of these five thousand data centers that already exist. And that it actually calls out Indiana in particular as an area of the country where developers are focusing. Uh, and these data centers stretch on very large sites, like three hundred and forty-three acre sites or more, and people who live near them, uh, complain about unending noise, like a leaf blower that won't ever turn off. Uh, the amount of, uh, water that's required for cooling these things is immense. Uh, the power that's required, uh, puts a lot of strain on public utilities and drives up costs for consumers. And the problem is, that this article points out, is that residents don't learn about it until it's too late. Because more and more, there's so much pressure to develop these things that some municipalities and localities are, uh, forced to sign nondisclosure agreements to even have a conversation about it. And part of that is because these tech companies don't want to tip off their rivals, you know, that, oh, I found a good place. But often, it's because they also want to make sure that local people who might object don't make noise and protest zoning changes, and they highlight that particular moment. It's the zoning change, because when you change the zoning, you lose a lot of your leverage. Cause you can impose conditions, but you can't force somebody to do something that's completely contrary to the zoning in order to get their project through. So, the good news is that we've tabled this, and so there's a little bit more time, right? But I think we need to give this a full public review. Um, I was really saddened, I think, by the meeting with the, uh, plan commission because, um, it seemed as though, uh, it felt as though questions couldn't be asked. And that the developer didn't, wasn't, couldn't be forced to answer them, but you guys are in the driver's seat. You can, you can force them to answer whatever questions you want to make sure it's the right thing for this community and to make those answers public. So, if they walk away, well, there'll be plenty of other people who will come along with projects, but if they walk away because you ask hard questions or demand that they be public about it, it means they probably didn't have the best interests of our community in the first place. So I got passionate because I love this place, I love what we have, I want to see that continue. And I'd be happy to talk to anybody in terms of setting up a, you know, I'd love for public review to happen, a chance for people to come and talk, and, uh, and I think that would be really great. Um, you don't have to, I, I would say it'd be great, I think, if, if somebody was willing to say that there isn't one of these nondisclosure agreements in place or that we know that's not a data center as far as we guys, as far as you guys know at this point. Um, but obviously, it's up to you. Uh, thank you for your time, unless there's any questions at the moment, I'll just take my seat.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, I actually do. And that article, um, can you send that to the council?
I can, yeah.
And also, are there, uh, I mean, I have no idea, you know, there's no like, I don't think any of us have any-
Non-declosure, correct?
Yeah, but, um, are there any mitigating, mitigating, mitigation remedies for these data centers if they did decide to go in to prevent some of those issues?
I had a partner back in the day who worked with data center developers, but I won't, I'm not him, so I'm not an expert on that. But my understanding is that while you can build, you know, a berm, you know, twenty feet tall-
Right.
Uh, you're not going to be able to avoid the inevitable noise and impact of just, you know, what it's doing to, uh, our utilities and the strain on neighbors. And, uh, and I think that's one of the things that this article was focused on, which is that a lot of times these come through because, uh, people get sold on the idea that it's tech, it's exciting, right? I mean, we want to be on the cutting edge of things, Ellisville has big aspirations, I think that that's a good thing. Uh, but I, I would hate to see us get taken advantage of, you know, and, and, and do something that we can't get back. And, uh, but I'll be happy to share that article.
Okay, please do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom? All right, supervisor's comment?
I have none. Thank you, sir.
This, this is too easy. Wow. Someone threaten you guys before the meeting or anything?
I do, I have something, I just wanted to let the council know. Um, I looked through and I didn't put a read receipt on it, so it may have gone into one of your junk folders, but the, um, excess levy appeal that you approved for submission was submitted on nine twenty-five and accepted by the DLGF to, for review. And on the budget, it was submitted, um, on nine thirty. And so I'm hopeful I should be able to have the salary ordinance for first reading at the next council meeting, um, prepared for you and ready to go, and I will send it out, I'm hoping that I can have it done tonight, so you guys will have enough time to look it over.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council comment?
I'm gonna read for the record the entire forty-four pages, I'm kidding, of the bottom. No, good. Oh, women.
Um, yeah, I'll let you.
I apologize.
Yeah.
Sorry, this is the first council meeting I'm in, too.
Well, thank you for attending.
I'm Frank, I'm, uh, I've lived in Ellisville now for a year and a half, I'm part of the Bloomington Disc Golf Club. I would like to make a proposal to add a disc golf course to the town hall, uh, park. Uh, it's the perfect location for a disc golf course, so a disc golf course takes up about twenty-two acre, or takes up about, uh, nine to eighteen acres. The, uh, park has twenty-two acres of wooded hilly land, right? So that is land that is not going to be easy to use for other activities. A, a disc golf course would fit in perfectly there. A disc golf course would not be a lot of cost, uh, a course costs about fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, right now, the Bloomington Disc Golf Club has eighteen baskets, which is most of the cost, um, that they are willing to donate towards a project. That would bring the cost down to about fifty-four hundred dollars. Um, that amount of money has easily been raised in fundraisers at other courses. I am more than willing to do that work if that is needed. Um, really, what we would need to do to make this happen is we would have to clear a path through the woods, which I have lots and lots of volunteers, I've got forty-one guys who said they would come out and help clear out a path if you would allow me to do that. Um, I got seventy people who are supportive of the project. Um, once the land is cleared, we would simply need to install a basket, which is simply a metal pole that goes in the ground. We would need tees, which are, um, easiest thing to use are, uh, actually hog slats, uh, cause they're easily movable. Um, and then we would need signage, which is about a hundred dollars a hole, it'd be eighteen holes. Um, this would add a lot of benefit to this park, one, you'd increase utilization. So, uh, Karst Farm Parks, which is on the south side of Bloomington, has about twelve hundred rounds of disc golf played a month, right? It's about forty rounds a day. So you'd add a lot of foot traffic to this park, you guys have clearly spent a lot of money, this is a beautiful park, I'd love if more people came out here. Um, it would add security to the park, uh, the woods are areas that are not surveilled right now. Um, having people playing the course would keep eyes on the area, that would keep people away from causing trouble in the woods, it'd also keep people away from littering and destroying that property. Um, it would service our recreational needs, right now, there's one disc golf course in Ellisville, there are nine in Bloomington for comparison, the one course in Ellisville, uh, is at the school, it's not playable from eight to four PM, or from eight AM to four PM, so during school hours. If there's a school event, you also can't play there. Um, it would be a, uh, really good social activity for the community, so disc golf is a sport where most people come in groups of three or four and they play together. Uh, I would love if there could be an Ellisville Disc Golf Club and an Ellisville Disc Golf, uh, League. I think that would be really awesome, I don't know how many social clubs there are for Ellisville, but that would be an awesome future for our community. Um, in terms of economics, there's not much that you can add to a park that costs under fifteen thousand dollars that adds that kind of utilization, so it's a, a very good, uh, cost benefit. Um, and then, uh, conservation, so, uh, we would not be clearing, uh, established trees, we would only be getting rid of things like underbrush that would help those trees thrive, it would make the land much healthier. So, um, I just wanted to present that to the council, I do have a handout, obviously, I'm trying to keep this short, but have a lot more information.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, I might suggest, um, to get with our town manager-
Absolutely.
Or with Denise, our planner, and, uh, run it by them.
And Jimmy has-
And Jimmy Darnold.
Parks, Parks Board.
Oh, I'm sorry, exactly, the lives of police department need-
Well, you know how it goes, just golf courses to get.
That's true.
So, um, if I may, so we can exchange phone numbers maybe, we can talk to you and talk about.
Definitely a great idea.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for presenting that, and thank you for letting him speak, because I'm glad to hear that.
All right, back to council comments, any closing comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
All right.